Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up our public hearing. We have two items to approve on the public hearing and Ms. Wilson, you're up.
No, you just call the meeting to order and follow the script.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So we are looking to approve and adopt the 2018-2019 millage rates in the final five-year work plan, the final budget of the Citrus County School Board. And then our item B would be to approve the addendum of the student code of conduct. So the first item up is to go into our millage rates and I will call this public hearing to order. The purpose of this meeting is to adopt the final millage rate, the five-year work plan, and the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Millage rates are 4.838, which includes .011 prior period adjustment for operating purposes and 1.500 for capital outlay purposes, or a total of 6.338 mills. The final budget for fiscal year 2018-2019 totals $231,117,537.65. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board to the millage levy, the five-year work plan, or the budget proposal for the 2018-2019 fiscal year? Would anyone like to address the board? Is there a motion to include the supplemental millage rate of .748 mills and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.50 mills in the resolution determining revenues and millage levy as required by law?
I move to include supplemental millage rate of .748 mills and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.50 mills in the resolution determining revenues and millages levy as required by law.
Second motion.
Okay, Ms. Bryant moved. Mrs. Powers seconded the motion to include the supplemental millage rate of .748 mills and the capital outlay millage rate of 1.50 mills in the resolution determining revenues and millages levy as required by law. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Resolution of the District School Board of Citrus County, Florida, determining the amount of revenues to be produced and the millage to be levied for the general fund for the district local capital improvement fund and for district debt service funds for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019. Whereas Section 101, 1.04 Florida Statute requires that upon receipt of the certificate of the property appraiser giving the assessed valuation of the county and if each of the special schools, excuse me, each of the special tax school districts, the school board shall determine by resolution the amounts necessary to be raised for current operating purposes and for debt service funds and the millage to be levied for each such fund, including the voted millage. And whereas Section 101, 1.71 Florida Statutes provides for the amounts necessary to be raised for local capital improvement outlay and the millage to be levied. And whereas the certificate of the property appraiser has been received, therefore be it resolved by the district school board that the amounts necessary to be raised as shown by the officially adopted budget and the millages necessary to be levied for each school fund of the district for the fiscal year are as follows. Number one, district school tax, certified taxable value, $9,989,065,37. Required local effort amount to be raised, $39,115,581. Millage levy, 4.0790 mills. Prior period funding adjustment millage amount to be raised, $105,485. Millage levy, 0.0110 mills. Total required millage amount to be raised, $39,221,066. Millage levy, 4.0900 mills. Number two, district school tax discretionary millage. Certified taxable value, $9,989,065,37. Amount to be raised, $7,172,948. Millage levy, 0.7480 mills. Number three, district school tax additional millage, it is blank. Number four, district local capital improvement tax, certified taxable value, $9,989,065,37. Amount to be raised, $14,384,254. Millage levy, 1.5000 mills. Number five, district debt service tax, that is blank. Number six, the total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate computed pursuant to section 200.065.1, Florida Statutes, by 0.32 percent.
Okay, having heard the resolution as read by Mr. Bradshaw and seeing there's a motion on the floor, is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, our motion passes, five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board for 2018-2019 fiscal year?
I move to adopt the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board for 2018-2019 fiscal year.
I second the motion.
Okay, Mrs. Counts has moved and Mr. Kennedy has seconded the motion to adopt the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to adopt the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board for 2018-2019 fiscal year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Our motion passes, five to zero. Is there a motion to adopt the final proposed budget as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year?
I move to adopt the final proposed budget, the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Powers has moved. Ms. Bryant has seconded the motion to adopt the final proposed budget as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for 2018-2019 fiscal year. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to adopt the final budget as the final adopted budget of the Citrus County School Board for 2018-2019 fiscal year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Our motion passes, five to zero.
The resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. Whereas the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, did pursuant to Chapters 200 and 101,1 Florida Statutes, approved the final rates and final budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. And whereas the School Board of Citrus County set forth the appropriations and revenue estimates of the budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019. And whereas at the public hearing in full compliance with Chapters 200, Florida Statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the millage rates and the budget in the amount of $231,117,537.65 for fiscal year 2018-2019. Now therefore be resolved that the attached budget of the School Board of Citrus County, including the millage rates as set forth therein, is hereby adopted by the School Board of Citrus County as the final budget for the categories indicated for the fiscal year July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution adopting the final budget?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the final budget of Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy has moved and Mrs. Powers has seconded the motion to adopt the resolution adopting the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to adopt the resolution adopting the final budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2018-2019 fiscal year, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, that motion passes, five to zero. So we're gonna do, so we're gonna go, we're gonna go into our next item that we have for the public hearing is the code of conduct.
Ms. Hombach.
Who's our court director of state services?
Good afternoon. Ms. Powers and I were talking some about it. One of the questions that she had was the addendum.
The language that's in there regarding, and it's inconsistent, because one portion of it says that you will be referred to mental health services and another portion says of the, of the new law says that you may be referred to mental health services. And it falls under the two different categories, one of bringing a weapon to school and one of making a bomb threat. So I took that language right out of the statute and put it in there so that it is, it comes exactly what the statute says, the new statute. What's that say?
On the section of zero tolerance, school-related violent crimes, it has to guarantee the environment is drug-free and protects students' health, safety, and civil rights. And I was hoping that mental health would be included there, physical and mental health in that statement. Are you saying that also is straight from the statute? It's on page two of the last paragraph.
Yeah, you don't want to assume anything, but we've talked so much about mental health over the last year and a half that health might now mean both physical and mental.
Do very well, but the one.
I mean, when they just say health, we might not differentiate. Not that I'm excusing anybody that writes the statutes, but.
All right, so I'm sorry, what?
Oh, it's the third line under zero tolerance and it says that the schools provide an environment that is drug-free and protects students' health, safety, and civil rights. And I was wondering if we could protect students' physical and mental health, safety, and civil rights.
Well, if you change anything today, you gotta take it all back to a, to another meeting and approve it.
Or you could approve it and then bring it back. We could approve it and then bring the other back.
That breakback has an amendment, but you can't change a word in here today. This is a public hearing.
Okay, how do we get it in there?
We'll just, we'll just bring it back. I'll bring, we'll bring back another amendment. Just like we're doing this, we'll just bring it back again.
We can approve today and then bring back another amendment.
Because I want to see the mental part of it.
We won't, we won't send it out till we get the second amendment.
I was gonna say, what's the obligation to notify?
I would post it on the webpage to make sure, you know, that.
We eventually send out a camera.
Yeah.
Take a copy today.
You know, where you can go to the, unfortunately, the webpage, it has the student code of conduct on there, it can be attached to that document, you know, and it has the First Amendment to it, the hyperbole. And that can be done that way.
All right, you good with that, Ms. Powers?
But unfortunately, this is, when they passed 7026 and all of this, you know, we were already, by the time we got talking about this, all of this had gone to the publisher for our regular student code of conduct and then they made us come back and have some of this. I see what you're saying.
Students' physical and mental health. Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
You don't have a motion?
I'll move to approve the addendum, I'm sorry, the addendum to the 2018-2019 Citrus County Code of Student Conduct.
Okay.
All right, it's an amendment and restatement.
Approve the amendment and restatement to the 2018-2019 Citrus County Code of Student Conduct.
We have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Counts to approve the addendum restatement of 2018-2019 Citrus County Code of Student Conduct. All right, is there any more discussion? And Ms. Powers, you're good on everything?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all those.
I'm sorry.
Yep, no, that's fine.
Only maybe you let small change, it doesn't, probably needs to go to a workshop, we can just bring it back at another meeting to approve for advertising again.
Okay, any other discussion?
We'll just do another agenda request, just like we did with this. Okay, thank you.
Does it, does it have to have a public hearing there too?
Yes.
So the agenda request would be for?
Probably the second amendment.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right, any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? All right, that motion passes, five to zero. And with that, I can adjourn the public hearing and I will reopen our regularly monthly meeting of the Citrus County School Board. Ms. Wilson, I have a couple of questions here for you. Thank you for the time, board members look over this a little bit. And I understand that this requirement from the state is, they're pretty, they don't give you much time.
No, and they, they pulled it down a couple of times and it was delayed getting opened, the five-year work plan, and Mr. Dixon, we only opened that, August 31st. Usually they open that sometime in early August, so the state was, they implement new GAFB rules and then they have to change the document and they were having issues and.
So on page 1B, on the second bulleted item in the kind of second paragraph area that come, component units, it talks about citrus micro school.
This is a financial statement for 2017-18. This is for what has already happened.
Okay, so obviously, micro school is no longer open in our county.
Correct. But it was in 17-18, which is what this report is about.
Right.
And this, this wording right here comes straight to us. They give us this template, it comes to us from the auditors already written up, we just changed the numbers in this document at the beginning.
So the component units, they, they give you that in that format?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is their language not off?
Yes.
So with that though, did micro school, they were open the entire year, the entire school year?
They, they submitted their paperwork to the state on June 27th.
Okay. And they're in an audit process right now?
Yes, sir.
Final audit?
Yes, sir.
Independent audit, right?
Yes.
Okay.
They get one every year, but there is a final one for us right now.
All right, and then I had another question on page 1F on the, and Mr. Kennedy will probably take, take heed to this. So this is for 2016, this is comparison of 2016-2017 to 2017-2018.
Yes, sir.
So our taxable value obviously increased, right?
Yes, sir.
It's increased again this year.
Yes, sir.
But our millage rate has decreased last year.
It decreased last year and it's decreased again this year.
Right.
Thank you.
And that, right, so that's one of our values that we constantly get to.
But don't forget, we got 47 cents per child permit.
Yeah, well, that was my, that was my next point is the, the fact that it also changed with the amount of money we got.
Correct, from the state.
From the state, which there was more monies allowed for safety and mental health, but in reality, it's still, it's increasing those.
Correct, it's, they restricted, they gave us more money, but they restricted it. So we actually will, in 18-19, are budgeted to receive about $300,000 less in tax revenues than in 17-18, even though our property values went up millions and millions of dollars.
And that's, but that's through the Florida Education Finance Program, which we don't control.
And the, you know, the other, there is a good piece to that. And I know that's hard because it's, it's not the pill I like to swallow. But the, the reason we get to have that is that every county has the same resources for every student. There are states that don't have the utilization. So from county, rich counties have rich schools and other counties don't necessarily. So I get mad at, at sometimes the formula they use, but I also try to remember that there is a positive side. You guys can remind me of that later.
All right, very good. So I do not have any other questions. We did not have a motion on this when we recessed the meeting.
Do you want to accept this one?
Yes, we do.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to go to the District School Board of Citrus County Management's Discussion and Analysis Report.
I think we need to call the annual financial report. This is part of, this is part of it.
Okay, motion by Ms. Counts, seconded by Ms. Powers to approve the 2017-2018 Annual Financial Report. Is there any other, are there any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? All right, the motion passes, five to zero.
Thank you. It's not an hour, but yes, I mean, it's statewide, everybody's, you know, dealing with the same thing. So we do the best we can and get it as quickly as we can.
Okay. And now, did you wanna, are you good on the budget update now too, or did you need it?
She lives in her sleep.
All right, so you got your, your budget books. I guess the biggest thing, we already just kind of touched on it and I want to touch on that, you know, that we are, property values continue to increase, but our millage rates are going down. So the value went up over $500 million this year in our property values and we're, you know, getting less revenue from that. So that's a statewide issue that they're lowering millage rates statewide. Our general fund, if we look at page 35, that's our results from operation. Our fund balance at the end of 2018, we did end with a 3.62 percent of undesignated fund balance percent of revenue. So we still are within our compliance and our guidelines. When we look at the budget, the proposed budget for, or now the approved budget for 2019, we are increasing that slightly by three point, to 3.81 percent. So we're moving in the right direction, which is to build up our fund balance. So, you know, we have, we're not teetering on that, that cusp, so. Well, in the budget, we don't have reserved the, we have to reserve money for the non-spendables is a big one, which is that's all our inventory, our fuel, our bus parts, our stuff in the warehouse, those things that we had in inventory, tires. We have to reserve our fund balance because we haven't expensed those out yet, they're just sitting in inventory, so we have to reserve money for those. And also, we had prepaid, a lot of prepaid items that we have because of software purchases and site licenses we need for the 18-19 year we end up having to pay for in 17-18 because that's how, you know, we have to pay for them ahead of time. We also had to restrict reserves, monies that are given to us for certain purposes, the categoricals. A lot of this, 3.49 million is, some of that is WTC's fees collect, the money they collect, we have to reserve that because we can't just go use WTC's fees for teacher salaries. We have to use that for WTC. We have money left over for CAPE allocations, those have to be used for CAPE classrooms, IBAP grant monies that schools might have gotten, those are usually a smaller, a smaller amount, but those things, we have to reserve those at the end of the year because they can only be used for those purposes. They're not just free money to do with what we want. So that's why we go from the budgeted amount down to the actuals once we get those out there.
I have a silly question, and I know you've answered it before, but I couldn't remember it going through the budget, is on the collected tax, or taxes collected on the chart, in 2012 was the only year where, because there's always a really good job at collecting as much or more. We're usually in 100 percent plus to 99 percent. I'm looking, I think it's page 16.
Okay.
But in like 2012, 13, there was only 91 percent collected and I don't know.
That was, um.
And I know there was something.
That was our Duke year and.
Is that what that was?
That was the Duke year and Duke didn't pay all their taxes, so we, then as you noticed, after that year, the property values started to decline.
Right.
Because they reassessed the property out there, so the values out there declined.
And we've, we're still, I mean, as much as we are more in property values, we, we're still not back up to where we were in the 2008 years.
No, sir. And our millage rates, if you look at page, which one is it? Well, if we look at page seven, that has a nice picture of the taxable value, how it's gone down and now it's going back up, but our millage seems to keep going down, 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 down. This is the, in 10 years, this is the lowest millage rate. This is the, in 10 years, this is the lowest millage rate that we have levied. So even though...
In how many?
In at least 10 years. This is, the graph is 10 years.
And I...
It could probably go back further, and I know it's less than, more than 10 years, but the graph has 10 years.
And I know the public does not always understand that we actually are the one entity that actually has had rollback rate for 10 years. And that does mean we have to do more with less.
Correct.
And that's a challenge that we continue to be under.
Yes. So. Any other questions on the budget? We move forward, it's approved now and...
You can enjoy your vacation.
I can enjoy my vacation, Miss Himmel. I'm getting in the car right now and leaving, so.
Are you really?
Yes.
Good. Enjoy. Don't tell us where you're going.
Any other questions?
Any other questions on that? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Bradshaw. Okay. Need to approve the minutes.
To approve?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Kennedy to approve our minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? All right, motion passes five to zero. Okay, this is another chance now for citizen comments. If anyone would like to approach the board. Any green forms without...
No green forms.
Okay, anyone like to approach the board for a comment? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to go into any other business that needs to come before the board. And we typically do go around and cover each person, but there is an item here, so we'll get into that item first. And that is the discussion approval of the guardian program. So I know that we had discussed this at the workshop meeting and the issues that we're dealing with as we continue to look down the road and better provide safe schools, we have to look at possible options and what we can do to, you know, make our schools safer. And I've said all along that one school resource officer is not necessarily the answer. And so we have to continue to look at numbers, you know. One of the, one of the reasons, one of the purposes of the Mardersville Douglas Commission is to look at and make a recommendation on school resource officer ratios for schools. And at the last Mardersville Douglas Commission meeting, there was a recommendation, of course, it's not in the final report yet, the final report has to be in by January 1st, but that there is the thought that every middle school and high school should have a sworn law enforcement officer, school resource officer, school safety officer, but a sworn law enforcement officer. And every elementary school in the state should have at least a guardian, minimum of at least one guardian. But that every school in Florida have a secondary person of at least a guardian. So when seconds, not minutes count, there is a great need to be able to provide added personnel that can react to an active assailant. Now, again, whether or not that becomes law, whether or not it becomes, it makes it to the final report, I mean, it was a voted on item, and that has been the direction that we're going right now. There was not a ratio like X amount of students per school should have a certain level. Interestingly, I had brought up in the meeting about a smaller school that likens to our Cabinet of Environmental Science, our school, that we have 80 to 120 students or so in there, and so that's a high school. So with that recommendation, we would have to have at least a school resource officer and a guardian, or two school resource officers for that, that size school. So, you know, I placed that out there for discussion, but it was a pretty big commitment from other members of the commission that, you know, that the secondary person is very critical. And that is, these instances occur, you know, within four to seven minutes, and the response from outside units generally won't be there in that timeframe. So there has to be a backup for the primary assigned person at each school. Now, with that being said, and we discussed the guardian option for us, I think what I heard from the board was that we have an option to hire an additional person or staff member to serve as a guardian. Now, you know, guardians are not sworn law enforcement officers. They do not have powers of arrest, they do not have the ability to take a child into custody on a Baker Act, they don't write reports, they are there solely to protect students should there be an active assailant or incident of violence. So what I've heard is that even though the law allows for us to use existing employees, that from what many of you have said, that you would feel more comfortable with having another employee hired to be a guardian. And in many school districts, larger school districts, they already have what they, a lot of times they call school monitors. And these are unarmed staff members that are assigned in different areas where there may be problems at the school, whether it's maybe smoking in a bathroom, probably in the locker room. They'll assign a school monitor to kind of those areas to monitor them, to make sure there's less opportunities for, you know, behavior problems to occur. Some districts already have kind of like a person in place that they could train as a guardian if they so chose to. Now, we don't have school monitors. But what I think I've heard the board say is that that would be something that you, that we would be willing to consider, should we need to go that route, to have another position as a school guardian. The way the Senate bill reads now is the sheriff must approve and train those individuals to be guardians, and we go through, I think, 138 hours of training. And so with that, what I would like the board to do is to, you know, inquire or to request the sheriff that, that he, that we, well, first of all, that we support the guardian program as an option for future school safety needs, and that we formally request the sheriff to train and certify school guardians should the option be exercised. What I'm saying now is rather than just waiting till something may come about at the state level, we can continually have our options open to us. And in order to have that option open to us, the sheriff has to agree to provide the training. Now, there could be changes to the law next year that would allow school districts or other, organize, other police agencies to train guardians. And so that would be something that may change. However, I think it's, it's good for us to have the option now, should we at any point deem necessary that we want to have another officer or a guardian at school. And Ms. Himmel, we've talked about, and I know that staff has talked about these larger schools, you know, and what can we afford to put in a larger school? I mean, I strongly believe that, that I wanted there to be some ratios involved with the secondary officer, but I understand, I understand the concept, I understand the thought process with why there needs to be a secondary person on every campus. But we have larger schools, we could be in a position to look at our larger schools to place a secondary officer in, you know, at any time. So I would like to have that option. And with that, we would, you know, we could, you know, I mean, I could make a motion, one of you, if you have any ideas. I've done all the talking, so I'm going to let you guys discuss this.
One of the things that you've said, that I think there was some misinformation out there, is that we've been always talking about the guardian program as, at least in the time that we were talking about a consensus, I thought as enhanced security, not a replacement for SROs. And that I saw out there, and I don't think that that was entirely our intention. So I, that, to me, would be something, is that we're talking about at this moment enhanced security, which is what you're talking about, the additional. I would say when you talk to the, to the commission, one of the things is that ratios play a role, that the size of the campus plays a great role. I mean, we've got...
The layout.
In the layout, because you've got campuses that are, are long and much more complex to, to do, and they may be an elementary school, or they, you know, I mean, we have a middle school that's as big as any high school. So to me, it's not as simple as...
I agree.
As that, so that's just...
And the commission, obviously, there's still been, could still be some, some changes and some additions. We spent a lot of time looking at ratios, looking at campus size, looking at location of the campus, you know, and police response, how long it might take. A lot of rulers may not have that good a response by, by agencies, so.
But one of the things, as far as with the letter, I think there's two pieces, because I think that there is, there's also the need that, and we're seeing this, you, you talked about there could be a legislative change, but if there isn't, this is when the legislature is getting ready to start drafting their legislations. I think we need to ask for flexibility. If our law enforcement agency, or in this case, our sheriff is not interested in participating in that, for whatever his reasonings are, or hers, is, then school districts are, have no option. So we, we need to have some flexibility to say then we could go to either another sheriff or some other training facility. And I think that, to me, is part of that request that I think we have to make to the legislature to make them aware, we are powerless in this. If we, if a school board such as ours is looking at this, we, we don't have this. And I will tell you that FSBA, that was, there's some conversations on that because we're not the only board that's struggling with that. So that would be the, the piece that I would say is, I have no opposing to a letter, but I think that the other piece of it is whether we do it in a letter to the legislators separate or we do it in a resolution and include the resolution to the sheriff that says, you know, we, we are open to a guardian program, we would like the powers to be able to, you know, the flexibility to be able to, to have a guardian program. And, you know, that, I mean, we have every other powers. We can create a police department, we can do everything else, but we can't do anything about the guardian. And I don't think that was their intention. So I do think we have two pieces on that, but let's, I'll let you guys...
And I, I think it's important because I think even before Parkland, this school district has always been ahead of the safety issue in our schools. We had, we had deputies in all of our schools for 30 years, over 30 years. And so I want to stay ahead of it. I like the idea of local control where we don't have to deal with numbers or ratios if we need, if we need because of the school plant, the size and the number of students, or maybe even the way the facility's been built, entry doors and exit doors. I'd like to see the local control. If we want to put our SRO on this campus and give him two supplementary, because of the layout of the campus or the number of students or the number of disciplinary problems that that particular school might have, then I would like to see the local control. I would love to have done a guardian problem, but we have asked since last May, we sat in front of the commissioners and everything, and we asked for the guardian program, and we have been told multiple times, emphatically no by our sheriff. I think it was prudent on our part, excuse me, to go ahead and find that second avenue, not going to another sheriff or any other way. But we, we've put in place right now in Citrus County, our, our own ability to, to do our own people and add those supplemental people, whether we get guardian approval or not. And so I don't want to, I would love to offer the guardianship one more time to our sheriff, but when I say one more time...
Yeah.
I do not want to go through five months of negotiations over a guardian program.
Right.
He either wants to do it or he doesn't want to do it, and then we, we move on to provide safety for our kids.
This would be kind of a formal way, because we, we formally voted on it.
But I would like to issue this, you know, what, I would like you to do the protocols for these, this guardian program, because you're on the inside of this Parkland thing. And those protocols should be in that letter. And our sheriff can say, yes, I want to partner with you guys, or no, I'm not going to. And then we need to move on as quickly as possible to keep our kids and our schools safe.
May I interject something? I don't think there's much protocol as far as the guardian program is concerned. The sheriff approves the guardian program. There's specific training that they have to have to be a part of the guardian program, but they are our employees. So it's just that the sheriff has approved them and basically certified that they've gone through all of the training that is, that needs to go through. And then they become a guardian. And what Mr. Knob was talking about, there's other districts that are, they're doing, is a hybrid model.
Yes.
Because what the statute says is that it has to be non-instructional. So what they've done is basically created another position, you know, which is probably the better way of doing it, and then you have somebody who's there all the time, you know, in that, being a, being a guardian.
And I think that's one reason that we, we did, we got this, the police force number, and we did job description so that we have that option to hire those type of people to put in our schools if we can't partner with the sheriff.
Right, but again, the, the cost of a guardian is significantly less than the cost of a sworn law enforcement.
Well, no, I don't want to, but I'm talking about a guardian or our, our police officers in the schools, but I don't want, I don't want to go through five months of negotiations over the guardianship.
The thing you're talking about, are you talking about a person who is trained by the sheriff? Are you talking about, you said a hybrid of a, a different animal?
Yeah, no, ma'am, I mean, it's the same person, or it's, it's just that what they did is instead of taking like a P E coach or someone who's not full-time instructional and making them a guardian, they have created another, another job description. So that person is not instructional, is not full-time instructional and made them basically, like if you take a teacher and said, you're going to be a guardian now, you're no longer full-time instruction, you go through the training, you change job descriptions, and now you're, you're part of the guardian.
And trained by whom?
Trained by the sheriff. The only person that can train them right now is the sheriff.
I think during this whole conversation, though, it would be very clear that, because there's a misconception out there, even when you all approved the job descriptions, that we were moving forward and opening our own police department. Because I think what the public needs to understand is that total program that we're paying the sheriff is a little over $2.5 million. And I think there's a misconception out there, if we were going to start one for 1.3, I don't think that's what any of you all said.
No.
You all kept saying if we have to add extra law enforcement at the high schools, extra activities, that would give us a local control of some activity. So I'm just making sure the public's clear that this isn't for you all to open up your own police force and put 22 officers out tomorrow in our schools. This is not a replacement, it's enhanced what we currently have in our SRO program. Doug, I want to ask you something about the retired law enforcement people that we've had in the county, have in the county that have volunteered to be part of helping out, not to take over, but just to be like, like a guardian or like a, a person to be a second command in a school. Are they, they have to be trained all over?
Trained by the sheriff.
Again, even though they're just retired two years ago as a sheriff?
Yes.
Not, it's sure...
I'm trying to remember, but I think the law allows for retired officers, there, there was an exception there. I think within a circuitary to talk. Yeah, within a circuitary to talk, for, for them to be eligible. But what, I think what you're talking about is we're taking a retired officer from another state that's still fairly young and smug here, that still wants to get involved, wants to serve. In order for them to be armed on a campus, they would have to be, the minimum would have to be trained as a guardian by the sheriff, go through the 138 hours and go through the volification that it would take for them to be certified as a guardian. And that would not give them sworn police status, you know, where they can arrest people and, you know, it would give them the law, under the law to be able to carry a firearm on camps to protect students from active assailants. And so whether it's our program, I mean, any guardian has to be trained by the sheriff as it now reads. Whether they work for us or they work for the sheriff, whether they volunteer, they would have to be trained by the sheriff as a guardian.
And I don't care who trains them. I want them trained, and I want as many as we can get in our schools.
Well, right now, it's, it's the sheriff that has to...
I know, I know that, I understand that, and I totally agree with Ms. Kellum.
Okay.
On that five-month business, no more of that. Either sheriff's going to do it, and if you won't do it, then we need to keep looking for somebody that wants to partner with you. If you had five or 12 or whatever, would suit me fine.
Well, it would give us, it would give staff, it gives superintendent some options to look at some things that we could do if we asked the sheriff, you know, we need to first of all find out, because if he's going to be adequately opposed to guardian program, then we don't have the options to, yeah, so.
But 12 people at Cantor High School is not too much to ask. That is a huge place with a huge bunch of children there that need protection.
I think one of the ways in, you know, to start this, and Mr. Bradshaw can make sure we don't get into too much trouble by doing it this way. we don't get into too much trouble by doing it this way, is if we start with a resolution, or we talk about things like, whereas the Citrus County School Board believes in enhanced security for schools, whereas we believe that the guardian program as provided in statute, you know, is a option, whereas we would like the ability and the flexibility to make those determinations, and then be it resolved. That way, that language can be cleared with legal to make sure that we've, you know, we've not boxed ourselves in, but maybe that we then, and we would, and what I say by that is, we then include that to send to our legislators, we can show to the community, we are interested in doing this, but we are very specific in what we're doing. You can do it as a letter, you don't have to do it as a resolution, but my thinking is, I think we've described that in that, at this point, we are not interested in arming instructional teachers. That's already in statute. But we make that clear, that that's part of what our positioning is. At this point, I think we're talking about enhanced security, we're also talking about additional personnel. It doesn't mean we don't, we couldn't change that at a future date, but right now, we're talking about additional personnel, and we're not talking about replacement in what we're referring to.
Not replacing SROs.
Right. So, all of those things, I think, detail trying to establish what we're referring to, because I think we all understand it with each other.
And I think it's quite obvious.
But we've been articulate that.
Right.
I think that in January, I think the report is going to advise us that multiple guns on our campuses, not in the hands of teachers, or anybody that is in control of students at any time during the day, and then they're going to suggest that we do this. And so again, you know, we've been ahead of the game all the way along here for over thirty years, and I want to stay ahead of the game.
Right. And that would give us an option, but that's, we're not saying that we're going to go out and hire guardians right now, because we don't know.
We can.
And that's to me, would be part of it.
But if you were to prove it, we're not saying that we're going to, we're now going to go hire six guardians. I mean, that, but at least we'd have that option to look, and staff would have the option to look at what could be something that could be available for us, and we have been ahead of it, and I want to stay ahead of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and the thing is, what the commission decides, whether it's, whether it comes out in legislature or not, there will be a report that'll have recommendations in it. And again, I'm not saying to you that this is going to be, this is the way it's finally going to be done, we still have two more meetings to go, and probably a third one in December. So, you know, there's still work that's going to be done, I'm just telling you what the discussion has been, and what was voted on, you know, moving forward, so.
And we don't know, the other thing I can see happening, though, and it's not going to happen before we don't have another contract with the sheriff, is there may need to be cooperative language in that agreement, whether he or someone else is training as to the guardians, because the last thing we want is two guns competing on a campus. We need there to be some cooperation with each other.
Definitely, yes.
And I don't, you know, that's another thing of why I think trying to express to the sheriff, that we're not just talking about a loosey-goosey situation, we're talking about very specific scenarios of guardians. Because my hope is that we might have some buy-in, some collaboration to say, we're working together, because those people are going to have to be on campus together. And it would be ideal if they were working symbionically.
And ideally, it would be great if they would be employees of the sheriff's office. Most districts right now, they're employees of the school district, okay? But, you know, it was even talked about how, in some of these larger schools, how it's kind of like a team, they're the security team, the SRO, and two or three guardians, and they're coordinated, they're, there's radio communication, it's like, you know, it's a very cohesive group.
I don't know, I know, of course, I'm very proud of some of my little kids in the classroom, our SROs in our schools right now, but, and you know, we've got number one and number three right here. But what the county needs to know is, our SRO program, they're a special breed, they're not, they're not high pursuit chase cops, they are people that are devoted to our kids, to our teachers, to our schools, and they've been very, very respected, and they've been very silent, you know, a lot of people didn't even know we had them in there until all this Parkland stuff started. But they're a very special breed, and so, I can't imagine, I can't imagine any one of our SROs not embracing the idea that we're giving them help and assistance. I just can't see that happening. And if it does happen, then if there are employers, we'll let them go, but we keep in our SROs.
I mean, we have, in our classrooms, we have teachers, and we have instructional aides. One is not a teacher, but one is very valuable, the other is very valuable, and when they work together, it's amazing. It needs to be the same type of system, I think.
I think it would be. So what do we need, what do we need to do, move this along?
We need to ask the sheriff, is he going to approve a partnership with the guardian program or not?
I think we need to have some language that we are agreeable on, that's clear. And I don't think it has to be complicated, I think it should be very simple and straightforward.
I see two things, one is asking the sheriff, will he operate a guardian program under the current law? And two is asking the legislature to change the law so that someone in addition to or other than the sheriff, or even a school district, can create its own guardian program.
Correct.
Because right now, you're locked in with whether one person in a county says yes or no, determines whether that whole program goes forward or not.
Well, if we did the first, I mean, are you saying, I mean, you're thinking more along what Mr. Kenny said with the resolution rather than the motion? Do you agree with that, or both?
Like, do a motion to ask the sheriff to?
Well, yeah, do we need to make a motion, or do we need to pass a resolution? Because I think we start with the sheriff, and we say, this is what we want, and if the sheriff does not agree, then I, you know, definitely need to think that we'll go with the second step, and that is to pass a resolution, or whatever we need to do to send it to our legislators.
I think that you can authorize the superintendent to send a letter on behalf of the board to ask the sheriff to, if he's willing to start the guardian program.
That the board supports the guardian.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the board.
Put a date of acceptance on it, please.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the chairman of the board can do that. I just would say that, in hopes of maybe having it be considered, some of the details that we've talked about, some of the meaning, trying to, we say guardian program, and the guardian program by statute can have great flexibility. We're not, I think, at this moment, referring to that, so we're suggesting it more narrow.
If you want, I can bring a resolution back to the board of the, what's our next meeting date, two weeks from now?
Twenty-three, I think, twenty-two. I'm sorry, September.
We're catching a break there, aren't we? So, I can bring a draft resolution back on September twenty-fifth, if you want to send it out, I can email it to you, if you want me to put some language together for y'all to look at on that day.
A resolution that would.
Well, a resolution to go to your, you know, even if, you can send it to the, you can send it to the legislature, you can send it to the sheriff, you can send it to whoever you want, but it's just the board, what I'm hearing is the board wanting to make some type of formal commitment, that they'd like to have some guardian program, and for the legislature to take whatever steps is necessary to put, maybe put some power back into the school district's hands, you know, whether it's, you know, you have more than one option of who can, who can train and the guardians, you know, maybe other police departments, or maybe other law enforcement agencies, so you could get, you know, F W C, or somebody else, and they can actually do the training, or create your own guardian program, you know, just more options than the one that you have right now.
Well, maybe, though, as things start to kind of come around with, I mean, even on the commission, I mean, the pendulum has started, as we get more and more information, it's kind of going, everything's moving this way, maybe the sheriff, maybe Sheriff Prendergast, will be starting to move that way, too. And, so, that's why I would say, rather than us saying, if you don't agree, we're going to do this, I would say, let's get, let's, let's ask him to.
Oh, I didn't say, I didn't think it was an either-or, I thought it was ask him, and then still move forward, I mean.
Well, let's get his response, is what I'm saying.
Asking the legislature to give you more than one option is not.
I think that's still a good thing, because the challenge that we're going to be under, I think, is that legislators, there's not too many times that we're actually on the same page with legislators. So, when we can get a win, maybe, together on that, to say, listen, we recognize, you know, maybe this wasn't, the guardian program, it was well-intended, but there are some, there are some things that are boxing us in. So, if you could change that, that aspect of it, that would permit it, and help us out. And I think that would be good, and I think that is separate to say, I still think a letter from you explaining what we're interested in, and would he please reconsider that? And then if he doesn't, we're still ready to continue to move forward. Even if he agrees with that, that's great for now, but what happens if, at some point, he says, I'm not doing it? And we have guardians in place.
So, but then we would want to make sure that, I would want to make sure that it's a formal request, I mean, the school board has voted to, you know, establish, or to have the option. Right. Because we're not saying that we're doing it right now, because we want the option.
And I think the legislature, when we contact them, they need to know that we're trying to provide this guardian thing, but they didn't give us the wherewithal in the law to enact it, but one way. And they need to give us some broader things to fulfill their intent, was to establish a guardian program.
And would that be in the form of a resolution then, in the second part of the, or would that be?
It's usually, it's usually easiest to do it that way, yeah. It's just, because then it kind of makes it clear.
Well, my, you know, my choice, my choice would be, let's make a resolution for the sheriff first, and then, or we can do it at the same time? I mean, if we're going to do one resolution, why don't we do a resolution?
Well, that's why, that was why I'm thinking, if you do a resolution, it covers both of what it says, and you say to him, this is a resolution that we passed, and then you stay, and you, you know, and you can detail pieces of that. I don't think, I think we're all actually pretty close to being on the same page. At the same time, you know, the next thing that we could do, if we were in that position, we would ask the superintendent to start drafting a job description for a guardian. And that would be, you know, the things that we can do, but there's no point in doing that.
Until we know.
Until we know where we're going, you know.
So, can you imagine the SROs with favors, having some help in the school system? They said we'd have.
Well, I can't speak for all the SRO, I can't speak for the SRO, I can speak for what I, as a former SRO, you know, I would welcome.
You wouldn't turn down help.
I would welcome having.
I spoke to a couple of them, and a couple of them said they'd love to have extra help.
Yeah.
And so, if that's the case, maybe the sheriff could look at Portia's and Prendergast, and from that point of view, it's help for the SROs, giving them a little extra boost there, rather than, I don't see the negative portion of it, I don't see why he would consider it as a negative thing, it would seem like, oh, it could be a positive thing, but maybe you need to explain to me why it seems negative.
And I certainly would be open to input regarding if there are some expectations he'd like to see, whether that's in a job description, or in some type of, I don't know, if there's something that he specifically says, I would be willing if it looked like this, or if it did this. I mean, I would be open to it. I don't think we've ever tried to not be flexible on this.
Well, so, we want, as a board, to do a resolution that we agree with the option of guardian program, and we ask the sheriff to train, or to be open to train guardians, and that we have a second resolution saying that we would like the legislature to, I mean, I don't think it's fair to the sheriff to give him a letter that says, you know, invite, you know, if you don't agree with this, we're going to take it to the legislature. I mean, I think we ask the sheriff, I mean, ideally, the way it works best is that the sheriff is part of this process, you don't have to go outside the sheriff.
I think that what's going on in Tallahassee, kind of went in itself to the guardianship program, because the governor wanted to release the monies to the sheriff, and they said, no, they're not going to do that. I think that the legislature is more in favor of the guardianship program. I think there are some changes that have been made.
And this week, as we know, both the leaders of the House and Senate rejected the governor's proposal on it, and made it very crystal clear, they are not going to release those guardian monies in another way.
And they need to help us fulfill their wishes to have a guardian program.
If you want a resolution, just tell me what you want, so I'll, I like that idea.
Yeah, let's, let's.
The resolution's not going to get passed until the twenty-fifth.
Yeah. I don't think we're in a time.
That's fine, yeah.
I mean, I think we're, that's how it works.
So, resolution number one is to the sheriff, asking him to start a guardian program?
That, you had said a couple things, Mr. Kenny.
Yeah, I just think it's that simple, you know, and I think you know this, West, you know, whereas the Citrus County School Board supports school safety, blah, 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 you know, and I think we refer to enhanced, you know.
I wrote down, request a guardian program, enhance security.
And I think even saying, and Doug said it earlier, recognizing that most incidents take place in forty-six minutes. We're looking for.
Where minutes matter.
Minutes matter.
Because I think that's, I mean, seconds matter, that's my message. Because I, it was interesting when you showed us that, the person that said, it's not about minutes, it's about seconds.
And then we, the support of guardian program as a potential option, right? I mean, one is an option, but that's why we're supporting it.
Exactly.
Right, but I think that we're saying is, we are looking and walking towards additional personnel on campuses. We're going to get there some way. We just, I mean, a guardian program would be, I think, a logical way, especially if it's, it's working with the law enforcement agency.
Now, the second resolution, Mr. Redd, are you thinking about doing a second resolution for legislation?
I think that you add the same thing, and all you have to do is add then the request of what we're, you know, I mean, really, the rest of it's probably the same.
It'll be a little different, but I'll, I think I can send them out, and they can respond directly back to me within a comment on the council, and then we can bring them all together, even at the next meeting, finalize them, I can type what we go, and some slight changes that need to be made, and approve it, try to sign it, send it.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, very good. We'll start into those other items of business individually. Mr. Muller, Mr. Brian.
I'll be very quick. I attended the I V ceremony at, he is.
Thank you for doing that.
In La Canto, and there were eighty-seven juniors who were in the I V program, it was a tremendous number, and seniors, I can't forget numbers, seventy-five, and seniors got their pins, the juniors got their sweatshirts, and, oh, gosh, Mr. Witt, Mr. Morris, just rolling, that's all, and his parents were so excited about it. Today, in fact, someone came over to the house to do some work, and his, in the I V program, he was just blown. And he came from the area down in Tampa, he was, he was paying thirty-six thousand dollars, but I was very, very proud of him. But that's one thing, the I V program is something, I attended a meeting on mental health, and I put some people from LifeStream with there, and I think I'll ask them to send you this information, we'll hand it out, but it would be pretty good coverage of the kids who are medicated, or the children who had money from the state. And my question always has been in medical therapy, about kids in the middle, the middle class child. However, what I heard today about what the health department could do, and they could take care of that middle class child, so I thought, okay, now I have a couple of LifeStreams in the health department, see what, in a combination can be done, that would be everything covered, and that would be what we would want, and so, very excited. And I'll ask them to send us, you see, we can read the parts, and really good statistics appear. That's it.
Well, my X meetings started this week, I had a conflict with Citrus Springs Middle School and La Canto Middle School, so I met with Mrs. Villal and Mrs. Prince, who got their school improvement plan, and very impressed with Rock Pressure. They seem to have a very solid plan of maintaining that A, and attended La Canto Middle, phenomenal. We should probably steal that girl for our public information officer. That's all I can think of, please don't leave the school. And then, this morning, I went to the League of Women's Voters, and I heard their pitch on the amendment issue, and they discussed the amendment one, which deals with our, you know, the extra seventy-five thousand, and it came up from the audience that they had, they were worried about the schools, and of course, the schools are not going to get any benefit of one way or the other, but they talked about that, but I. But they talked about that, but I was surprised also how much they talked about amendment eight. It's not on the ballot anymore.
Yep.
And, yeah, and it was, it was very nice. And then, this was the first of four, but if you've got people that ask you about the, how am I gonna know how to vote? The ladies are doing it three more times between now and the final election, and very, very well. They, why they support it, why they don't support it, and they're a nonpartisan group. But I was surprised at the number of minutes that they spent on amendment eight and saying very nice things about our school system, including that their next month's speaker is going to be our superintendent, Timbal. And she will, she will be at the next, on the twenty-fifth, she'll be at the League of Women's Voters over in the Coastal Region, like, at Chris River, as a guest speaker. But this is a phenomenal group of non-political people. They're just concerned about the Constitution.
And I just worked it, I think of all the special, we got five months of negotiation and everything else, and it was very tough on us. But the public is seeing what the school system does, so we can very cross the continent, like you're talking about. So it's worked against us, but it's also worked for us, because we're gonna support it.
And on that, I want to congratulate Ms. Powers.
Oh.
You know, amendment one, that, you know, schools are not included, or not, or they're not, it's supposed to not be impacting, except last year, we might have said that. This year, it's counties that have supported the funding in many ways of security. So if they get hit with a loss, which they are expecting that if amendment one passes, they are gonna have some challenges of having to raise money. The question has come up with FSBA, that the League of Counties and the League of Cities are concerned as to how that's gonna impact the funding of safety and security and what they've been contributing.
And even beyond that, and I don't know, I'm probably the oldest one here, but I still remember when we met. Homestead exemption was passed in Florida years and years ago to try and persuade people that had second homes in Florida to come here and buy their license tags and get their driver's licenses, and the five thousand dollar exemption on their taxes. Then we moved it to twenty-five. And what a lot of people didn't realize was that twenty-five exemption, back then, the only thing between Citrus County and Tallahassee was Georgia Pacific and trees. And we wound up with just going from five to twenty-five, with some counties in our state losing their police forces and losing their fire departments because they had no tax revenue. Because they had a bunch of mobile homes that were worth fifteen thousand dollars. They didn't have homes. And, I mean, when I started that and we did that, homes in Conny Heights were selling for thirty-five thousand dollars. And so I think even though, you know, it's gonna be nice to say, well, they're taxing at least a base now. But anytime you do that home site exemption, some county smaller than ours is gonna get hurt. Because they don't have that type of revenue. And so that's, that's my consideration, you know, because I just watched what twenty-five thousand did, and now we're talking about seventy-five thousand.
It's concerning.
Yeah, it's concerning. So anyway, I just, and you've got people that are questioning the amendments, telling them to go to one of these meetings with the League of Women's Voters. They're, they don't, they'll tell you exactly why they don't support something, why they do support something, and why there's no position on a couple of them.
And with that, because of amendment eight, we do want to thank them, because it, more than anything to do with civics or term limits, that was about creating a secondary school system within Florida that was controlled by the legislature. And with non, with only appointed, so I'm glad that that's gone. The, Ms. Bryant and I are headed off tomorrow to Florida School Board Association's Leadership Conference, where we'll be sharing about Citrus County, and we'll also be getting ready for the upcoming new leadership in Florida School Board. And I just want to thank the superintendent. I was at a SAC meeting yesterday, and the chairperson shared out about the superintendent's parent council that you have started. And the feedback was already so positive. They shared a great deal, not just about Alice, about the SRO situation. You shared with them just a wealth of information that they in turn shared with their SACs. I know that that's a great place for you to have feedback from parents, and I just really appreciate it, because I think it's gonna be very, very successful.
We've got our next one scheduled, I think, October twenty.
That's so super. It's great.
The girl at Canton Middle did an excellent job here.
All right, I have a couple of things. Mr. Mullin had asked if there was a board member that would be willing to serve on the threat assessment review. Ms. Humboldt has a committee together, and has asked if we would like to have a representation on the threat assessment manual. Now, I know Mrs. Powers is very involved with mental health, but I was, I wanted to offer it before you, Ms. Powers, if there would be another board member that might want to be involved with that on the threat assessment, if it'd be you or if not, Ms. Powers. Okay.
But if another board member goes to be involved, then...
Are we good with Ms. Powers?
We are.
Ms. Powers, that would be great, if you could be on that. And then that is, it says it's on October fifth, but Mr. Mullin, I guess you can make sure.
Ms. Humboldt will be in touch with you.
Okay, very good. And I, too, have heard a lot of positive things about Alice, the way it's being presented, and the drills that are going on. And so I had, there was primary school SAC meeting yesterday, and so even with the teachers that are on there, and we had two students, I mean, it seems like everyone is very receptive, and it's a great thing. And I give kudos to your staff for getting that out there and taking it so seriously, because it is so important for us. I also mentioned about the Dads Take Your Child to School Day. And I think Mr. Mullin maybe sent something, or I can't remember, Mr. Dixon, but it's on September twenty-sixth. When I brought it up at the SAC meeting yesterday, I mentioned that, you know, we always, I think, I always get calls from, or some moms that say, what about moms? Well, I thought it was interesting, they're doing a Muffins for Moms. At Evans Primary School, their PTA is doing that, and so I thought, well, that's really kind of a cool thing. But they do, it is a big thing, Department of Education is a bit a little behind this Dads Take Your Child to School Day, and it is powerful. I know we all get out there and see that.
They were overwhelmed last year with the number of dads.
It was impressive, and I'm so thankful to the fathers for getting out there. There's a school safety and security meeting on Thursday that I will be attending. And, you know, we talked a little bit about individual school safety committees, and that was at Evans Primary School, the SAC committee there. And so I appreciate, too, your parent group that you have, you know, because that's still a challenge that we face is to get parents involved, and to get parents in schools and being a part of things. So I want to thank, when we went outside for the break, I saw Mr. Bishop, a gentleman that had came and had an issue. Mr. Bishop, the surgeon, was out there discussing things with them, and that's what we, that's great, to see that communication going on. So I appreciate that. That's all I have. Okay, all right. This meeting...